There's a problem.
Our phones are all.
Always good to have it to get into.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open up this joint work session between the school board and the city council. You know, just go around the table here and let each person identify themselves. I'm Bruce Hamon, I'm the mayor.
Terry Short.
Jeff Franks.
Elzina Anderson, City Council.
Pete Marks.
Mike Hand.
Jeff Castle, Superintendent.
Erica Smith, School Board.
Well, Foster, School Board.
Greg Wheeler, School Board.
Kathy Medival, Chairman, School Board. And Diana Williams is calling into the meeting.
Okay. All right, Mr. Hand, you want to get us started here?
It would be my pleasure. Good evening, everyone. I think my responsibility are introductory remarks and posing an agenda for our time together today. I think that there are three things that in my view we'd like to accomplish. And one, to receive jointly as two bodies, an update of the completion of the conceptual phase of design work for the Waynesboro High School project. Two, again, as collectively two bodies, acknowledge the ongoing work around the city's comprehensive plan and the fact that it provides and that process provides perhaps a more refined and full context in which to consider not just capital investment in Waynesboro High School, but capital investment in the broader community on the municipal operation and on the school operation. And finally, if the conversation leads us to the point of perhaps considering timelines and milestones and perhaps key decision points that might facilitate progress in the near term concerning Waynesboro High School and improvements to that facility and campus. I think Mr. Jones is going to handle presentation of the conceptual design. I might offer a couple of observations prior to that. I think through the work of the comp plan, there is now a broader recognition, certainly among the municipal staff. I think I can speak confidently for those citizens and staff members from the school system that participated on the steering committee, a broader and more refined acknowledgement that there is opportunity and need in the community. And in order to secure a healthy and sustainable future, not just for Waynesboro Public Schools and not just for the Waynesboro High School facility, but for our community as a whole, we probably have some pretty urgent work to do in the near term and over the next five to 10 and even 15, 20 years. A realization came to the committee group and to staff who were supporting that effort that until about June of 2017, the conversation and focus around Waynesboro High School was very much centered on and almost exclusively centered on Waynesboro High School and did not contemplate needs, capital investment needs in the city and probably didn't contemplate sufficiently the need to improve operating budgets for the school system or for the municipal operation. And as we worked through the comprehensive plan and examination of where our community has strength and where we really need to apply resource to make improvement, I think there was in some cases even a stark realization that we really need to consider the high school project. We, or decision makers, the community as a whole ought to think about the high school project in the context of the broader health of the school system and our community. And I think what the comprehensive plan contemplates is that the community and its elected leadership and non-elected decision makers will endeavor to strike a balance between capital investment, both in the school system and on the municipal side of the equation, and improvements to operating budgets for the school system and for the municipal organization. And some specific examples include Dr. Castle and the school board have communicated consistently around budget time, the need to do a better job in our community regarding teacher compensation. I think the community and I know the municipal organization and our leadership has recognized that we have fewer police officers and that we have than we did say in 2008 or 2010, prior to the recession, and that our community needs to do a better job, a stronger job, in enforcing property maintenance and code violations in our community and that we see sort of the overall health of neighborhoods and families in those neighborhoods and the broader community in somewhat are threatened in decline because we haven't held things to a proper standard. And we come to the point where if we're in a situation in which we're thinking exclusively about a capital investment of Waynesboro High School or in Waynesboro High School and on the magnitude of what was originally considered anywhere from $46 to $70 million, you pretty quickly arrive at the conclusion that you're not going to be able to afford to do anything else for the school operating budget or the municipal operating budget. And you certainly aren't going to be able to consider much more, if any, additional debt for the school's benefit or for the overall community's benefit. And so I think rightly, the leadership in that working committee began to think about the Waynesboro High School investment in terms of how do we allow or create the ability to improve operating budgets and make necessary sort of immediate improvement in that facility, which I think elected leadership and the community all recognize as urgent priority for our community. And so that's kind of where we are, that by extension, there's an expression that I think folks will become familiar with as you have the opportunity to see the comprehensive plan catching up, keeping up, and getting ahead. And that theme is applied to capital investment, operating investment, and I think you could extend a similar theme to individual projects such as Waynesboro High School. So we understand that there are things that are pretty immediate, that fall into the catching up category, and that there are things that we have to commit to on an ongoing basis to preserve that investment and preserve the health and sustainability of not only the facility but the instructional system. And then there are things that we want for our community that become essential for our community that allow us to compete more effectively for businesses and families who are discerning customers, that when they look at the opportunity to live or locate a business in Waynesboro, that we compete effectively on measures of education, neighborhood attractiveness, economic stability, public safety and security. And frankly, I think we have work to do in all of those fronts and there's an opportunity to do that, but that opportunity is either significantly restricted, if not completely restricted, if the proper balance and scope and budget is not identified for the high school project. And with that introduction, I think it probably makes sense to have Mr. Jones give us an update on the design, unless my colleague, Dr. Castle, has comments that either correct or put my introduction into more perfect context.
I can't imagine a more perfect introduction, Mr. Hand. That was a fine introduction. I'll introduce Randy Jones, who is a project manager, architect with OWPR, an architect firm we have been working with throughout the facility study and over the last year on conceptual design, which Mr. Jones present to you.
Well, thank you all for allowing me to come tonight and give you an update on the conceptual design that we've been working on for quite some time for the Waynesboro High School. I think you all are probably aware, but we've had a team of engineers and architects go through the building multiple times, evaluate it, assess it, and then also meet with staff members who come up with the conceptual design that we think will carry Waynesboro High School into the 21st century in terms of new learning styles, collaborative learning and those types of things. So I'm going to jump into it. I'm going to try to keep it brief, 15 minutes or so, and we'll go from there. For those of you on this side of the room, I know you're not going to be able to see anything. For one, I'm blocking you, so if you'd like to move over to the other side, that would be great, although I have a feeling you all are probably familiar with it. So I'm going to start with the site plan. So basically, you can see the outline of the original building. This is a 1930s building, and the '50s building goes down in this direction. The yellow indicates proposed additions. One thing you'll immediately notice is the 1970s addition is gone and has been replaced with a rather large classroom and gymnasium addition. There's also an addition back here that I'll go over. I happened to be here on Friday and observed the late afternoon mayhem with the students leaving the parking lot, buses and so forth. So there's obviously a need to address site circulation, how buses and students and everyone either come or leave the site. So one of the big issues is the parent pickup. And so we have tried to create a longer parent pickup area, and this would be more like a community entrance where they can come in and out. Keep buses separated, obviously. We also wanted to create additional parking in this area and then have a service area. So everything, the bus loop is currently here. Everything is now separated and it should help with some of the congestion that is currently happening. This shows you a little bit bigger, larger view on that. I know some people, whoops, hit the wrong button. Some of you may be interested in the parking. We have 112 parking spaces here, 80 parking spaces here, 43 here. I don't know that we could ever get enough parking spaces on this particular site, but anything we can do to enhance it or add to it is definitely going to be a help. And then obviously, the bus loop is used for parking, and we have 142 spaces down in this area. So the basic concept of the plan is, you see the two colors there, the blue are the major renovation areas, the yellow are the major additions areas. Currently, this is what is traditionally viewed as the entrance to the school. Currently, the entrance to the school is here, coming through this vestibule to auditorium. We want to move that entrance back to the front door, the front door to the community, which makes sense. Everybody thinks that's where they should be going. And in doing so, we can create a secure entrance area that will allow someone to buzz in and come into a waiting area and not go any further. I was able to walk in and I could have gone just about anywhere I wanted. So it's just really great because this is a nice, small community and, but things happen in small communities just like they happen in large communities. So that's something that needs to be addressed and will be addressed. So this area will become more like a reception, check-in area, and then the administration area will, for the most part, remain as it is. Counseling areas and so forth will be further developed in these spaces. As we move down the hallway to the '50s area, you have a beautiful auditorium. This community should be so thankful to have such a beautiful auditorium, but it does need some support spaces added to it, scene shop, some additional classroom space. So that is a small, fine art addition that we are proposing in this area that will really enhance the flexibility and use of the auditorium for the community, and that will really be a great, just a nice gym for the community right there. Obviously, you have a bright new cafeteria, lots of natural light coming in, really nothing that needs to be done in that area. You come into the gymnasium area and we'll show you some things that we think could be done with there that could certainly be enhanced and improved. And then you come down into the mannequin corral area, which will also be renovated. So the grand plan here is to create a three-story classroom addition that will really provide some interesting 21st century learning concepts through the use of a little bit different type of configuration for CTE, art, and some of the other specialties that are housed together adjacent to a new media center. The current media center is on the second floor and it is functional, but it certainly does not meet the requirements for a new 21st century media center. A large commons area that will also be adjacent to a very large gymnasium, and then new locker rooms. The old gym, which is located in this area, would be demolished. When you have this much seating in a gymnasium, you have to have a lot of restrooms available, and that's just simply code requirements. And then a fitness area and then a multipurpose room in this location. As we go to the second floor, I do want to point out, we have a restroom and an elevator addition here. I peeked into the elevator, but I decided not to get on the elevator. Considering that I heard it probably breaks down probably once a week, I think, so that obviously needs to be replaced. So we will have this connection, connecting corridor here to restroom and elevator, and then our connection to the upper level. And this would be a science and math learning community, so to speak, and this is currently how we have it laid out with a large collaborative learning area in the middle, and I'll show you a picture of that here in a little bit. And then as we go up to the third floor, you'll see how that connection is maintained and we have replicated that. The other disciplines are located on the other floors of the building. So I thought it'd be interesting to show you some, I'm not going to say they're before and afters, but they are currently what you have as opposed to what's being put into newer schools around the state and around the country. So you currently have what you would call a typical high school classroom, two different classrooms here. One thing that you'll immediately that I'll point out to you is desks. I don't know about you guys, but I was still a big guy in high school, and for me, to be sitting in these desks was just an excruciating experience. Furniture is going to play a huge role in a new high school concept. Furniture that is flexible, movable, allows a person to sit in and rock a little bit, move a little bit, will really foster creativity and help with overall behavior. So furniture is going to be a huge part of this. This is a classroom in a, and I hate to say this, a new $70 million high school that we're designing in another part of the state. It's ironic that it's almost the same price as what we were talking about earlier. The classroom itself is not that different. It does have LED lighting, which is dimmable, allows you to either raise or lower the light level, extremely energy efficient. It does have natural light. It does have windows, just like you currently have. What's different is the classroom is zoned to have different types of learning activities occurring in the same space. The furniture, which is reconfigurable, can be set up in half circles, it can be set up in smaller groups. There are rideable surfaces all over the room. Sometimes the entire wall was one large rideable surface for students to get up and work in two or three small group activities and do different things on the walls. Smart televisions have replaced digital projectors. The technology is just constantly improving, so there's a lot of changes, a lot of differences. It's not just a matter of painting and techniques versus tile, putting the floor and putting new floor tile down. I saw, and I wish I'd taken a picture of it, I saw the longest power strip I've ever seen in a building in one of the classrooms. I think it probably had a dozen, maybe more, places to plug into. So electrical is a huge, huge issue, and electrical is going to take up a lot of the scope and budget. Same thing with, this happened to be the first classroom that I walked into, it's the same classroom, I think it's earth science. And what's shocking is how small the room is for one, it's very small, doesn't meet state standards for a science classroom, but just how really non-functional the space is. Doesn't have a sink. Of course, it's earth science, but you still would like to at least have a sink. It does not allow for a lot of flexibility. Basically, there's your lab tables together in a group of four. To move those things around is incredibly difficult, those slate tops. Old, you can see here, the old wiring here, there's power strip here, you've got all kinds of different types of technology in there. A new science lab really is more of a flexible, multi-use type classroom. You don't have as many built-in utilities. You bring in your portable utilities, you bring in a small portable gas post and burner. That way, the space can be used for lots of different activities, lots of different functions. You put your utilities that you do have along the wall, you make sure your tables are on wheels, your chairs are on wheels, so the space can be easily reconfigured. In this particular model, this is a chemistry lab, and they did, we did go ahead and put utilities in in several locations in the center, but these tables and chair arrangements are free moving. You can pivot them around, you can cluster them together. Students can work in groups of six, they can work in groups of three, so it gives them a lot of flexibility in terms of how they're using that space. So everybody is familiar with the long, long hallways that are there with lockers, which students aren't using lockers today. They're on a four-block schedule, they don't need to have the backpack full of all the seven different curricular books that they've got to have. The lockers have pretty much become a thing of the past. The new high school that we're designing doesn't have lockers in it at all. They are, everyone has a tablet or a Chromebook, and basically everything's on that. The whole school's wireless. So what do you do with all this space that's in there? Well, with some of the things that we're proposing are taking out some of the lockers, creating built-in benches or built-in bar height stations where students can plug in their wireless devices, whether it's Chromebooks or their phone. That way, the charging has become a huge issue. I was in the hospital the other day and they had a charging station set up in the emergency room. I thought, this is brilliant idea because we're all sitting there on our phones and there's no electrical outlets to charge. So what you're seeing here on the right is basically what a new corridor looks like in a high school. It is wider. Typical high school corridor is anywhere from 10 to 14 feet wide. This is actually about an 18-foot wide space. You'll notice it has furniture in it, it has collaborative learning spaces with the smart TVs. It has glass looking into all the classrooms, which is quite shocking the first time you actually see it. All these things really take away this old school model that we have right now. Teachers can see out into the space, they can send their students out into the space, students can work independently. Students can see what's going on in other classrooms. If you've never seen this model set up, and I think the school board's actually seen this model, you'll say it will never work, too many distractions, kids are going to be walking by waving their hands, and happens for about a week, and then all ends with this way. They adjust to it, students love it. It's just got a completely different dynamic in the school. Bell changes, you don't have that mad dash of just people bumping into each other going through the hallways. It's now like walking through somebody's living room. It's much more calm, much more laid-back type experience. So what we are doing is basically putting in lockers that you can rent. Because sometimes students need a locker just for a day, or they might need a locker for just one semester. So we're putting in some banks of lockers that basically you go in and rent, just like at an airport or an aquatic center or something like that. And then you get away from these old locker banks, which are truly just a nightmare in terms of watching what's going on back in there. My school had that. I was educated very quickly on what was going on in those locker banks. So that takes that away. This becomes usable space that can be used for instruction. And then we just have smaller locker areas, again, that are counterheight. Behind these lockers are actually computer stations, but these lockers also have built-in charging ports, so you can put your device in there, lock it up, charge it. So it gives you a lot more flexibility. So this is one of the resource rooms or maybe faculty work rooms. I don't know about you, but I really wouldn't want to spend any time in there. You've got, you've got electrical communication stuff on the wall, it's just dark, it's very narrow. What we are trying to do now is, again, open these spaces up, make them have a lot of glass. We want people to see what's going on in these spaces. There's a lot of great, a lot of great learning, a lot of creativity that's happening in these spaces, and we want people to get excited about that and see that. So we are opening these types of spaces up with large glass doors. They can be opened up for larger groups, then they can be closed down if it's just two or three. So a lot of different, a lot of different options there. And then the gymnasium, there's some really great bones in this gymnasium. I particularly like the arch trusses that are in there. Floor probably needs to be replaced. This is a gymnasium, it's built in the '30s that we renovated, and it's amazing what a really great floor can do for a space along with the really good lighting. We have decent lighting here, I think it needs to be supplemented. Also, we need to have a way to control the natural light coming into the space. You can see the glare on the windows, shining on the walls, that's a real issue. We put in blackout shades there so that during game time, they can pull this down. They don't have those issues. Enhance the physical properties, those types of things. And then wanted to kind of end on what a really beautiful school that you, City of Waynesboro has. An iconic school with that 1930s architecture, it's right here in the heart of the community, and we want to enhance that, we want to celebrate that. And we want to enhance that, we want to celebrate that. Unfortunately, the 1970s addition does not do that. So we did do a rendering that would show what this would look like. Here is the original entrance, which would become the front door to the school again. And then you see the three-story classroom addition. And we are borrowing some of the same architectural styles to help the building blend in, so that it, it really balances out and fits really the soul of the community. So that is my presentation. Do you all have any questions?
What is the lifespan on, for the renovation addition or parts of the building?
So if you, if you read and do research on it, you'll, you'll say, they'll, they'll say that a renovation should last 25 years, whereas a new building will last 50 years. Well, obviously, that's not true. You've got a 1930s building that's going to last another 30, 40 years. It all depends on how well the building's been taken care of and maintained over the years. Your mechanical systems will have to be replaced every 25 years. And that doesn't, it doesn't matter if that's a new building or a renovated building. The infrastructure, the plumbing, the electrical, those types of things, what's being put in today will last 75 years. What was put in in 1930s, it was really made to last 30, 40 years. So there's, those, those types of issues they have to deal with. So there are some scheduling issues that I want you all to be aware of and just to consider as you continue your discussions. If you would like to proceed with the design of the project, we could have it ready to advertise for bids in the spring, so construction could begin in summer 2017.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Sorry about that. Even Dr. Castle didn't catch that. Summers are important. This project would, would take two, maybe even three summers. The reason summers are important is the school has to be occupied while it's being renovated. And there's certain things that we absolutely have to do with no students in the building. Asbestos abatement is the first thing that has to be done, and that has to be done in the summer. And then also, everybody has heard all about the national disasters with hurricanes in Florida and Texas. That is starting to have an impact on our current projects in terms of getting mechanical equipment manufactured and shipped, casework, different types of building supplies. Just the demand for that has ramped up, and so now we're seeing instead of a six-week lead time on a piece of mechanical equipment, it may now be a 10 or 12-week lead time. So those are just things we have to take into consideration as the project is ultimately Any other questions? Did I keep it, I kept it close. All right, thank you very much.
Now, who's going first?
Well, I would offer the following observation, that if there is, if we can all agree that work on the high school is, if not the top priority, a top priority for both elected bodies, and that we, there is a uniform desire, a mutually shared desire to start as soon as possible, then there is the opportunity, as Mr. Jones suggested, to make some key milestone decisions to position the community to initiate work on the project this summer. From the city manager's perspective, I think we need to, the two bodies and the community as a whole, need to come to grips with what is the scope and what is the budget for the project. And I think what I attempted to do is, or what I've tried to do more effectively here is, how do we determine a scope and a budget? And are we striking a balance with pursuit of goals other than simply investment at Waynesboro High School for the community? So are we thinking about teacher compensation? Are we thinking about headcount in the police department? Are we thinking about the other opportunities and investments that I anticipate or know that the comprehensive plan will suggest to us? And if we are, and I'm being respectful and speaking for the group, if we are as a community thinking about that, then we need to be thinking about something other than the full scope of what Randy has presented tonight. And we need to be thinking about a phased approach to the high school project and something less than $46 million. But perhaps an approach that you're catching up, keeping up, and getting ahead allows us to make meaningful progress at the facility while we make meaningful progress in the
Well, I think, you know, some of the discussions we've been having with the, with the school board and with, you know, two-on-two, and you and Dr. Castle, that's been one of our main concerns of what direction we go in and the timeframe that we go. And I think it was brought up on both sides. It wasn't just brought up, you know, from the city side. I think Dr. Castle kind of led a lot of the discussion about trying to start some construction by 2018, the summer, and things that we can knock out while the students are out, that would be cost savings to the community, because the kids can come back in in the fall and go back, and we don't have to do the rentals. And try to do the project without them having to be there in the mix of the construction. And then looking at the timeline of coming back to try to get to the new building being part or being built, and the old part being torn down once again, where the kids can be kind of eliminated from all that, and it'd be in areas that, is that kind of what we talked about and what our understanding is, Dr. Castle?
That's accurate, yes.
And, and I think we're kind of leaning towards you and the school board as to what direction and what phase we should start at to try to, y'all know more about running the school and how this is going to work there than from this side of the table. That's also correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you got something to add?
Yeah, I would, I would just add how much I've appreciated the conversations that we've been having, our two-on-two discussions, and going back and speaking with our counterparts for the better part of a year now. And for me, the comprehensive plan has been so insightful, and I would hope that y'all would, would echo this, Katty, is that, in that whether we like it or not, the fact of the matter, when we start talking about the portfolio of issues in our community, they are either directly or indirectly associated with education, the performance of education in our community, whether it's through capital investments or through operational investments. And so if we turn our blind eye towards all of the other portfolio issues, and address one thing, I think it's Mr. Hamp sort of articulated, I think very well, is we, we may be potentially caught up on one thing, but we've neglected to catch up on so many other things that are so connected to the future and stability of our community. So I would, I would echo that. I would, you know, we've, we've had conversations, everything from, you know, if we had a salary increase of X percent for X number of years, what would that do? And what we would learn is that it, it basically absorbs our budget, and to the point we're not even, we're not even touching one brick on a school building if we were to do that. So we've got to look at this from a strategic and intentional and thoughtful way. And so I think that I would certainly look to the school division to help us identify what are the most critical things that we have to do in that building? What are the most urgent things we need to do? And then set the course in that manner.
And I'll take that as a question.
Yes.
To be answered.
It is. Question mark.
Randy, can you scale back? I can offer? Yes, to this plan.
I'm using the red.
I would tell you the most critical needs, I believe, now are in this area, and particularly on second and third floor, which are the following. And Randy, you correct me if it's wrong. There's some really serious issues, both constructionally and just from a building level, in terms of, now this part of the building is structurally sound, the 30s and 50s, but aesthetically, in terms of flooring and ceilings, and I think everybody's heard all they want to hear about roof leaks, but I've got to put a roof on this building. And, and that's the first thing that's going to happen before you can repair ceilings and floors and those kind of things. So going back, I would tell you the most immediate needs are in this area for instructional spaces. This space may seem like new addition, and it is new addition, but it serves a number of purposes. It provides ADA access to our stage and to these areas behind. Our stage is used by drama classes, theater and drama, by choir, concert choir, and by the band. So it's used all day, but it's also used, from now until Christmas, you can pretty well find something in there every night of the week, whether it's band, choir, theater, or an outside group. And by that nature, we need additional spaces to support that, but to support the instructional program of our students. This wall does have some structural issues, and this then makes it an interior wall, not an exterior wall, from an engineering standpoint, as I understand. The other thing that's used every night is the gymnasium. Maybe not every, it's used every night until six or seven for practices. It's used most nights of the weeks, then when practice is over for competition. It doesn't have air conditioning. If you've been in the gym recently, you know that. We really have to get some HVAC in that space. The issues may seem minor, but the glare off the windows is a real problem for competitions as well as just daytime. So just some basic renovations in this area is needed. Okay, I'm giving you a longer answer, and I don't, Mr. Hamp didn't put me on the top. So I would tell you to, the short answer is, this renovation needs to happen first, or most immediately. That leaves the 70s addition, and I feel like at that point, we could come back, revisit the 70s part, and make some determination about demolition and, and addition of a classroom, the classroom addition with additional instructional spaces, and then at some point, I would hope, consider the gymnasium and the associated locker room, et cetera. This is a pretty important space here for a lot of different reasons. It's really, it doesn't have to be connected to that. It is important, one, because of the elevator, and two, because of the toilet facilities. And these spaces currently, you have to go outside to get into the CTE areas, and they're really not CTE areas. They're, they're not real functional for any instructional purpose. So reconfiguring these to fitness and multipurpose will allow us, currently the only space we have in bad weather. If we're not outside here doing phys ed, we've got one gymnasium to do again. And with 875 students at, at high school, you can't have everybody who needs physical education in that gymnasium at the same time. So this would give us some additional spaces for instructional PE classes during the day, some adaptive PE for special needs students, and then actually could serve as practice spaces in the evenings for us as well. Does that answer your, your question in terms of the order in which I would recommend? And we've had discussions among the board and OWPR about.
And if I were to sort of relate this to our own homes, we're basically going to, we, the, the, the sort of strategy here would be to make sure everything that we have in the home that we currently love and enjoy is, is renovated and brought up to a scale and the modernization that is consistent with the 21st century education.
And, and I don't want to overstate the condition, and it's a bit embarrassing to say this, but, but the conditions of some of our classrooms have gotten, especially on second and third and fourth, to the point that frankly, you wouldn't have that condition in your home. You would have painted and put flooring and ceiling. Don't think we can expect our students to be there.
I've got a freshman this year over there, so.
You know, we're happy to show it to anyone, or you've got kids. But yes, it would, at the end of this, our vision would be that it would feel like a new construction. It's, it's a complete renovation, and it would just have a completely different feel about the, the building.
And at this, at the same time, not turning a blind eye to that addition that we want to add on to the home, or the, the extra asset that we want to add. I mean, am I, am I, that's sort of?
Yeah, I think what we want to do first is the renovation piece. That addresses a lot of the safety issues with entering the building. It separates the parking lot and bus and parent drop-off. And then, and, and it allows the city as well to be working on some of these things that the comprehensive plan has, has brought up that need to be done. And then, you know, a couple of years down the road, we can look at adding the, the classroom piece. I think it fits into, you know, the whole community working together.
Right. And that's, 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 I think that's one of the, the things I've most enjoyed, again, with, with the conversations that have taken place over the past year, is that we're, we're all in this together. You know, education is such a paramount fixture and, and, and priority for every community, not just Waynesboro. And so, understanding that we've got our eye on the prize of what the ultimate thing's looking like, but, you know, much in the way that we would make improvements to our own home, we're going to deal with, with the assets that we have in place now, but again, with the sort of eye on the prize moving forward, sort of what I'm hearing. I would also add too, just, just from the context, a little bit of, of, for folks to fully appreciate, that we're the ones that pay for this, right? So the City of Waynesboro are the ones that pay for this. There's no, there's no rescue squad coming from Richmond or Washington DC. So when we're talking about these, these dollars, it's, it's us, we're the ones that are going to have to pay for it. And so I know I've appreciated the conversation and that trying to be thoughtful and strategic about a community of 22, you know, 21, 22,000 folks can do, I think is, I'm certainly inspired by, by, by the, by the thought process here.
If I might add, I think you make a good point, that I believe we've concluded Mr. Hamp addressed tonight. This building's going to be here, in the center of Waynesboro, the center of the city, on Main Street, for probably beyond my tenure, 40 or 50 years or more, right? This part of the building's going to be there, and so the investment in it is, we're going to get the return on that investment by any measure I think you might use. And I think that's part of the value of addressing this more immediately. We can then have a conversation about the 70s and new construction when it's more appropriate, but it's, it, it seems that this is a long-term investment that we're, we're making without much question than is needed.
I think the old saying goes, the devil's in the details, and talking about doing things during the student's summer break time, so that they won't interfere with the normal And just what can we reasonably hope to, to accomplish in two and a half months, maybe thereabouts, time between school letting out and school starting again, and fairly early in August? So what can we hope to accomplish in this renovation, and what are we looking at as estimated costs?
Well, let me, if I can clarify that, there would be work going on during the school year, and I won't make the statement that it would not be without some disruption to students or faculty or the, or the educational process. I think we can minimize that. What is important to capture this summer is to first do asbestos abatement, which will take some amount of time, hopefully relatively short. But then- But then to begin to maybe divide hallways where that we're working, it wouldn't be unusual, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, but having lived through a couple of these, one as a teacher, you divide the hallway and you do one side of the hallway and it's unoccupied. And when that's completed, then students move in and you go to the other side of your hallway. And it's not unlike being on a street when it's, with renovations taking place. It's basically a framed-in walkway so that students are protected from the construction on the other side. It might be, if things were ideal, that we could even complete a floor or a part of it. But the other part of summer would be to figure out what are the rooms, and we'll call on Mr. Techie to really study his schedule and be sure that we're utilizing all of the spaces most efficiently that might free others up for a semester at a time. And I wouldn't, I can't say definitively that we would do this without some modular units. To house everybody in Waynesboro High School would take 40 modular units. We just don't have a place to set them. We may need two or three, four, set down in the parking lot or where we're getting ready to do demolition of a laundromat in that area. So there may be some external modular spaces during the year, but they would be minimized. We're also, possibility of using some other buildings in the area even. So that would be, I just felt like I need to clarify those points. We would, there would continue to be work going on. If we do these additions, both of those can take place. They're external to the current instructional spaces, so that work can be going on during the school year as well.
Right.
So Randy, you would add?
We have, at one point, we had three high schools that were under renovation and all of them were occupied during the entire process. And it takes a lot of coordination, a lot of meeting with the faculty and staff, parents, to make sure everyone's aware of what's going to happen. I like the idea in this project of doing it by floor, starting on the third floor, finishing the third floor, moving to the second, the 1930s addition. There's probably a good portion of the third floor could probably be done in the summer. It's when you get down to the first floor where we're going to have some walls that are going to be reconfigured and those types of things that it's going to be a little bit more of a challenge. There, I think we probably would have to split the hallway and we would renovate the top half so students can get to the 70s addition and back and forth, and then vice versa. But, and then as Dr. Castle said, the additions, if those are approved, the fine arts addition and the multipurpose and fitness room additions, those are going to be, those are going to be occurring pretty much from summer all the way to the following summer. It's going to take about that long to get that complete. So just the renovation of the 1930s, 1950s, and then the fine arts and the multipurpose addition, that's still going to take us, if you wanted to proceed, that's still going to take us all the way through 2019 and possibly even finishing 2020. So it's still a long process. And the reason it's that long is because we have 800 and some students in the building. We have to be very aware of that. We've also had situations where contractors will work from 3 o'clock until 11 o'clock. Some contractors prefer that, particularly the electrical trades and mechanical trades. Otherwise, there's hardly anybody in the building and they can have free access, they can run their cabling, that type of thing. So there's a lot of options out there on how we can accomplish it. And like you said, the devil's in the details, absolutely.
I believe there was a question around budget, was that? Which is the part that I've hesitated to get to. We've done a lot of analysis of each in parts and all of them can, nothing that we're talking about doing prohibits another phase or another step from taking place. So we're not building and then going back and tearing out or doing a repair to go back and take it out to renovate. It's one-time expense. To do the area to the 70s addition, the part that we would propose to remain and would be there, including these areas of some new construction...
And the outdoor parking lots.
Of surrounding parts. These are rough estimates, but less than $20 million. Is that a, now I realize there's a lot of less than $20 million, but I'm going to say far north of 15, 2018, I, we're working off an estimate right now, but considerably less than 70 or 50. Would that be accurate?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
20 would, I believe certainly cover our needs. We could work toward a number lower than that.
And that was the priority area, like the area?
Yes, that's the, that's the, that would be all of the building except for the 70s addition.
Okay.
Including this new construction for the arts and this new construction which supports some multi-use spaces and...
Elevator.
The elevator is an important part of that. So that would leave the 70s addition to, in this plan, be demolished at some point and new construction take place. I guess theoretically, if we get farther along and things change, we could have another discussion about that. As Randy pointed out, I think we're looking at three summers and two school years at best.
Mr. Hamp, how would you advise that we proceed in terms of moving forward? Because as I understand it, you know, time is essentially of the essence. You know, the concept of preparing drawings and moving forward, that doesn't happen in the blink of an eye. Y'all need some lead time to do that. There's a borrowing season coming up here in the spring and...
So that's correct. I think that we had not contemplated either body taking formal action this evening, but I think if there is, if both bodies are able to communicate consensus, even unanimous consensus, that orienting ourselves toward starting work this summer, give the staff a nod and assume Dr. Castle will communicate to Randy and they can start that work. And then I think Dr. Castle and I need to begin putting bones on operational budgets and Dr. Castle and the school board need to work with Randy to put some flesh on the bones of the phased renovation. And then I need to come back to the council and speak more specifically about how we would pay for the project. Now, some encouraging news that the community and both bodies can take with them from this meeting, we've taken a pretty significant step toward funding the project. You know, the council approved a tax increase that is effective in this tax year, this operating budget. You'll be asked to appropriate some money from the additional revenue generated for that. So I can't tell you that that increase in and of itself is sufficient to fund the project described here, but we have taken significant steps toward that. And I think I would need some time with a financial advisor to bring back a report to the council about how close we are and what might be needed in terms of future tax increases, not only for funding the project, but also addressing some of the operational improvements that we've contemplated in our conversations.
And we would be agreeing to move forward with this first phase or the entirety of the project?
We'll follow your direction.
Okay.
My recommendation, if you will, would be to undertake this portion that, again, is going to be there for the next couple of generations at least and get us to the 70s. It would be difficult to prioritize and figure out how to do that. Doing one floor, one wing, it's that, that really kind of all comes as one. This is a logical piece, this addition is a logical piece, and this addition is a logical piece, if you will. There's really three components to it that are independent of each other. So my recommendation would be the significant renovation with some associated new construction.
So to reiterate, there's no throwaway. So we're planning, we're planning this investment over a sequence of phases.
Yes.
And then, and then second of all, just to reiterate too, that when we're talking about educational investments, we're talking more about just, not just capital, that we understand we've got, I mean thankfully now, Kate Collins with a partial accreditation, but we've also got another school that needs, has an accreditation issue that we need to make investments so that all students in Waynesboro achieve all that they can. And so, you know, I'm looking forward to that conversation in the coming months as well.
So is everybody on this side of the table good with what we've discussed? And go ahead and get this ball rolling so we can, we're good, all right?
And on this side?
Agree.
All right then, I think we've accomplished a lot here tonight, so got to kind of err it out here in the community and let people know what the plan is and how we proceed with it.
Yes, sir.
And staff can come back with all the other side of the funding and where we'll go. You two work together and we'll get this show on the road.
You're going.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything else to add then?
I would just like to add that I really appreciate the work that the school board has done with council. It's something I can't say has happened every time we've had it, not this group, but in previous groups. And, you know, starting back when we used to visit other schools, we've seen some of that process in your pictures, Randy, and I appreciate that. And it was very impressive when we looked at it. But I like the fact that we've been able to communicate with the school board. I think everybody here, you know, if we had our wishes and snap our fingers, we'd love a new school. It's not going to happen, but we believe, we truly believe that what we are going to obtain will accomplish things, hopefully that the school board can be proud of, and we'll be proud of, and mainly the communities will pay for it, can be proud of. So thank you for your...
All right then, we'll end this meeting. Thank you all.